... microphone sitting in my face though.
Good evening. On Tuesday, February the 11th, voters will go to the polls to choose who will represent them in the Stillwater City Council. In preparation for this election, the Stillwater League of Women Voters are pleased to present this evening's Candidates Forum. I'm tonight's moderator, Gladine Allman, with the Stillwater League of Women Voters, and this evening we will be hearing from candidates for Stillwater's City Council, seat three. Before I describe the format and the rules, I will introduce the candidates. They are Slade Militz and John Wedlake. To begin the forum, each speaker will have two minutes to make an opening statement. And then, and you may now phone or text your questions. If you are a listener, you can phone your questions, and the number is there on the screen, but the number is 405-762-6613. So you can phone in your questions, and a lead member will answer, and the questions will be given to the moderator. The questions are prepared by the League of Women Voters and by members of the audience. So if you're out there in the audience and you think of a question, raise your hand, and a lead member will get you a card and a pencil, and they'll get it up to the moderator. Questions will be screened by lead members for duplication only and illegibility. Questions should address the issues, so there won't be any personal criticism accepted. And both candidates may respond to each question. There won't be any question directed just to one candidate. The answer will be limited to 90 seconds, and a timer will raise a sign when you have one minute left, and then 30 seconds left, and then when they hold up the stop sign, you must stop. And please hold all audience applause or verbal approval until the end of the forum. Now, before we start today's forum, we would like to ask all spectators to please turn off their phones. That includes me. Okay, the candidates have drawn for opening positions, and the person who speaks first in the opening will speak last in the closing. We will hear first from Slade Militz.
Thank you, Ms. Gladine. I appreciate this opportunity coming in tonight and talking to you all, discussing the issues that you present to us, and just kind of getting my ideas across to all of you. First of all, I'm a 20-year veteran of the military. I'd spent 10 years in the Air Force and 10 years in the Army. During that time, I was stationed overseas and in the United States. I've had a lot of experience going to towns of various sizes. Grew up in a little itty-bitty town, and I've lived in big cities, about 150,000 as well. And I think just the different places that I went, I got to see the plans that they had, not necessarily always good plans, but ones that they managed to bring in, both good and bad. And I've only lived in Stillwater for 18 months, so I'm not a lifelong resident, but I do believe that I have some good ideas that, given the chance, I'd love to share with the community at large. And also, I think, again, my ideas I could use to improve Stillwater where it needed to be improved, and help keep those things that need to be sustained as well. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Slade. And now we'll hear from candidate John Wedlake.
Thank you. So I'll open by saying thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you tonight and answer your questions. Without your input with what we do up here on the horseshoe, this process doesn't work. So I appreciate you being here and being an active part of this process. For those of you that don't know, I'm John Wedlake. I'm Stillwater native, born and raised here in Stillwater. I have sat on seat three for the Stillwater City Council for the last three years, and have appreciated the opportunity to do so. I was a graduate of Stillwater High School in 1998. I'm starting to show my age. I subsequently enlisted in the United States Army as well, served a three-year active tour with the United States Army Airborne with the 82nd Airborne Division at Fort Bragg, and then spent five years in the inactive reserves upon coming back to Stillwater to start my degree. So upon my completion of my active duty, I came back to Stillwater, started studying microbiology and molecular genetics, received my four-year degree, and then was lucky enough to matriculate to the OU College of Medicine to complete my medical degree there, and was lucky enough further to stay there to finish my residency in neurology and to complete my postdoctoral work there. Upon completion of that, I subsequently came home with my wife and two little girls. I would be remiss to say that I need to say goodnight to Callie and goodnight to Kinley, because I said that I would. I love you both. But came here to start an independent neurology practice, because neurology is something that has been underserved here in Stillwater for a long time, and in the midst of doing that, ran for city council in 2017, which pretty much brings us up to here, and we'll kind of talk about that, three years of me sitting here, I'm sure, throughout the rest of the evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wedlake. And now we will start with a 40-minute statement of questions prepared by the League of Women Voters and the audience here, and also our listeners. I wanted to remind you again, you can phone in or text your questions, 405-762-6613. Okay, each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to the questions, and we will rotate the responses, starting with Slade. The question is, "Do you think we should have another bond issue to pay for improvements in infrastructure such as roads, sewer, and water lines?"
Infrastructure is very important. I was just discussing this earlier today in another debate with Dr. Woodlake. I think it's one of the biggest issues here in Stillwater. Living here for the last 18 months, I was rather shocked shortly after coming here with all the rain that we had and the flooding which covered some key streets. I was kind of surprised with a town of this size having flooding issues like that, and that would be an infrastructure issue. And then, I'm also very adamant about sidewalks. I think the sidewalk situation in town is rather dangerous right now. I have an eight-year-old that needs to cross a busy street every day to get to school, and I know for a fact that I've been almost run over on that street a couple times. So I think a bond would definitely be a positive step for our infrastructure issues.
Okay, thank you. And John?
Yes, ma'am. So I would not be opposed to a general obligation bond. I agree with Mr. Militz in the fact that I think that it would help spur our infrastructure development and even perhaps economic development if we were able to pass that. So anybody that's lived in Stillwater for any amount of time probably remembers the last general obligation bond that we tried to pass that failed miserably in an 80/20 vote. There are several reasons for that. 90 seconds is probably not long enough for me to get into those, but if we were to pursue a general obligation bond, I think that there are things that we need to look at very closely as those of us that sit on the council to ensure that we're not wasting the voters' time, to ensure that we get a bond on the docket that, or on the ballot that would pass. I think a general obligation bond is a good way to do that. I would be more in favor of a general obligation bond than a tax at this point. That is coming off the tail of one of the largest spending packages that Stillwater has ever earmarked for infrastructure. We, as the council, recently approved about a $26 million earmark for infrastructure improvement, and those projects you'll start to see coming out of design phase in the next year and moving on into a construction phase. So a bond would be a good way to piggyback onto that package that was just approved by the council.
Okay, thank you very much. Now for this next question, we'll start with you, John, and the question is, "If you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?"
Well, you know, zoning is probably the, one of the more difficult things that we deal with up here on the council, because it's, there are generally some divisions in how people think that that should be done. I think one of the things that we could streamline better than anything, and I answered this for the news press questions, is to streamline our specific use permit process. I'd say that we're on the right direction of that, and in fact, back in, I believe it was November, approved some updates to our SUP process for specific uses. But that's something that I think that we can make more affordable to developers and people that are interested in improving our economic status in Stillwater, and making it more streamlined in terms of the red tape. So the specific use permit process is something that we have targeted, and I will continue to target if given the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And Slade, if you could change one thing in our zoning code, what would it be and why?
Well, again, not to beat a dead horse, but the Stillwater news questions, the one, the idea I had, again, covered sidewalks, because, like I said in the newspaper article, hodgepodge of dangerous sidewalks, the way it is right now, some places aren't sidewalks at all. And just knowing that there's a lot of pedestrians here between the college students and other residents of the city, I think it's very important that we have, you know, not only roads, but sidewalks as well. And then, I also think it's very important for diversity's sake, and inclusivity is to have ADA-compliant sidewalks as well, because it's important that we are there for all of our citizens and not just particular people.
Okay, thank you. Next question, we'll start with you this time. "On February 11th, all those citizens will vote on extending a 1/4 cent county sales tax and changes purpose from supporting the county jail to being used for equity roads and bridges in Plano County. Do you recommend this change and why?"
I personally will vote for the quarter-cent sales tax to go to another area, being county roads, knowing that some of the roads in the area are rather rough shape because of the flooding and just time in and of itself with vehicle use and everything. A quarter cent that we have been using for the construction of the jail, I think it'd be a good small amount versus of the total sales tax to go towards roads. I just think it's very important for the community, you know, we have a lot of traffic that comes through town, just, you know, to give a good, a good overall feel for people coming through the city, and I think this would be a very good step.
Okay, thank you. John?
Yeah, so for, to make it short, yes, I will be voting yes for the quarter-cent sales tax as well. Now, this being a county tax, this is a little bit outside of my purview as a city councillor. I don't have direct control of any of the county's financials. But as somebody that frequents county roads and has driven on them both with a car and a bike, I think that there is a fair amount of improvement that needs to be made there. So I was actually happy to see that the view was kind of shifting from one of, you know, using those funds for the jail to one more of transportation infrastructure. So I too will be voting yes for the quarter-cent sales tax. Again, as a city councillor, I don't have a lot of power over that, but as a private citizen, I think that is a good shift of focus for those monies.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start with you this question. "What effect do you think the organizers of Love Our Stillwater will have on moving Stillwater into the future?" If we're going to be specific, there's, you know, a lookout, you're familiar, a building, a vibrant community, what effect do you think it will have?
Well, I hope that it has a large effect. As somebody that sits up here as a representative of the citizens of Stillwater, it is encouraging to see private citizens organizing and moving things forward the best way that they see fit. That's actually how this whole system is supposed to work, by the way. I'm not a monarch. I don't sit up here and make the decisions based on what I think is best. I'm really supposed to make decisions on what you think is best, and I'm supposed to be your mouthpiece. So the fact that there are private citizens organizing in order to move things forward as far as economic development, as far as improving our infrastructure, and ultimately improving our quality of life, is reassuring, to say the least. So I hope that they have a large impact, and I look forward to working with that group, both as a private citizen and as an elected official, if given the opportunity, to see where they go. It'll be interesting to see, but I hope they have a large impact.
Okay, thank you. Slade?
I am very excited both for the Love Our Stillwater and Envision Stillwater movement, so to speak. I was excited to see that they both had a Facebook presence, and I liked them as soon as I realized that they were out there, because I feel it's very important as well that citizens have a voice in what happens in the city. Whether I'm elected as a city council or, you know, I continue to be just a citizen of Stillwater, I find it very exciting that everybody has an opportunity to share their voice and their opinion on what they feel would be the best course of action for Stillwater to go forth into the future with economic and infrastructure developments.
Okay, thank you. Starting with you, Slade. "How do you believe Stillwater should proceed with the recycling program, curbside recycling program?"
I voted on that on the poll that is sent out through the email, and I definitely think we should continue our recycling program. I moved from Oregon before I came here, which recycling is huge there. They have a receptacle basically for anything and everything that you can recycle. Here, I really enjoy how we can drop recycling on the curb every week, and it goes. I understand there have been some issues with people utilizing the recycling bins, throwing in things that they're not supposed to. I think just more of an education item, you know, to citizens saying, hey, this is what you're supposed to recycle, this isn't what you're allowed to recycle, that would be a great first step, and then just continuing on from there.
Okay, John?
So the recycling thing is a difficult conundrum. I think we can all agree in this room that recycling is something that is better for the environment. I'm not a big proponent of throwing everything into a landfill and covering up with a bunch of dirt. Certain economic conditions, not the least of which is our relationship with China overseas, the market for recyclables here in America has gone down considerably in the last couple of years, making it more difficult for people to have a financial incentive to continue to recycle or to accept recyclables, because it's hard to turn a profit. That being said, I don't think that this is a decision we need to make purely on financial or economic grounds. Again, this is something that is, that we are all responsible for, and I would hate to tell my two girls that hopefully are not watching any longer, that, sorry, we screwed up, you're going to have to deal with all this trash yourself. So I look forward to seeing what the recycling task force comes up with. This is something that is not a simple solution, but at the end of the day, I would like to see continuation of the curbside service as, as long as we can do that in an economically responsible manner. And that's a discussion that is ongoing with that task force. So I look forward to seeing what they have to say, because again, this needs to be a citizen-led thing. We need to hear what you think and make a decision based on those wishes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a question that says, and we'll start with you, John. "Do you have any input," this is what the person writes, "for control of the explosion of so many CBD, medical marijuana businesses in Stillwater?"
90 seconds I have for this? So anybody that's followed my voting record, and I surely hope that it speaks for itself, will see that I am the only councillor that has voted no on every specific use permit that's come across my desk. There are multiple reasons for that. I will say that I have no ethical or moral hangups about people using marijuana. However, as a doctor and somebody that's intimately involved in people's brain health, I think there are many unanswered questions about how THC and how CBD affect people in the long term, or even in the short term, because quite honestly, I've never read any convincing piece of literature, and I've got 127 citations for any of you that are interested, that show overall long-term safety or efficacy in anything outside of the realm of chronic pain. And so for those reasons, my no votes all stem from the fact that scientifically, I am not convinced that marijuana is ready for general population use. And so for those reasons, I have voted no on every SUP that you've seen come across the city of Stillwater. Now, the problem here is, is also a problem with state preemption. So we, as the council, actually have no power over this. The state of Oklahoma has said that we cannot vote no on anybody that wants to open a CBD or marijuana shop here. State preemption is something that I will need much longer than 90 seconds to discuss. However, it's something that is quite frustrating as somebody that represents you, our citizens of Stillwater, and is more intimately involved with you than anybody at the state legislature, however, I am powerless to do that. So my votes up to this point have largely been symbolic.
Okay, well, thank you. Slade?
Again, I just came from Oregon, where of course marijuana is now legal, recreational and medical. Just like Dr. Woodlake, I myself don't have any overall concern with people using marijuana. I feel if that's what they choose to do, as long as it doesn't affect my family, go ahead. My interest in the dispensary is, I'm quite surprised on how many we have for such a small town, 50,000 people roughly, with as many dispensaries as we have. I too understand that the state pretty much said it's a free-for-all, you know, you can't say no if they want to open up a dispensary. I would like to see, and I don't know if the city currently has such a thing, but I would like to see some kind of business license in play, something where a business would have to show that it'll be viable down the road in order for it to be open, because I feel with all these dispensaries, they can't all be viable, because again, there's only so many people in Stillwater, and only so many people are going to use medical marijuana.
Okay. Well, next question is from Slade. "What are your feelings about continuing our complete streets plan for a walkable city?"
Based off of my previous comments, this should be fairly easy. I am very much a proponent of sidewalks. Right now, based off of what I've read of the code, it seems like it only needs to be on the north or the east side of the street. And again, like I've stated previously, I feel that the way the sidewalks are now, it's not very conducive for usage either by people that are walking or people that are using wheelchairs or walkers. It's just not very friendly. We need more of an ADA-compliant sidewalk system and more complete on both sides of the streets so people can get from point A to point B and not risk getting run over.
Okay, John?
Yeah, so I'm, like I said, my voting record, I hope, speaks for itself here, but I'm a large proponent of multimodal transport, excuse me. A lot of that stems from the fact that I'm a doctor, a medical doctor, and I like to see people exercising or improving their cardiovascular health. That means you don't see me down the road when you've had your stroke. So multimodal transport is something that I think everybody on the current council agrees is an important thing in looking at our infrastructure moving forward. Going back to the earmark of the spending package we just approved for the transportation infrastructure, a large portion of that also includes multimodal transport with those projects. And so when you look at things like the Sixth Street Avenue project that's going to be going on for over the next four or five years, we've all looked at, everybody on the council have looked at, how can we make this in a way that not only improves the flow of traffic from an automobile standpoint, but also how do we get more people involved in maybe leaving their car at home and riding a bike, or God forbid, even walking? There is a culture here in Oklahoma that, you know, for better or worse, we don't like to exercise and walk here a lot. And that's not me saying that, my stroke data will prove that. So getting citizens excited about that, you have to provide them an opportunity to do that. And that's something that we, that the current council, I think all of us would agree, feel very strongly about. So if given the opportunity, that will continue.
Okay, thank you. The next question really is related to that. This person says, and it'll start with you, John. "Although the city should be commended for street repair on frequently traveled streets like 19th and Patrick Love and Lakeview, there is much needed repair on less traveled streets like 10th and 11th, and how can we speed up the schedule for street repair?"
Pass a bond.
Oh.
That's it.
That's it?
Pass a bond. So the reason that you see that, the reason that you see some streets that are newer that get overlays, is because there's a very complicated algorithm, and I would not, by no means represent that I understand that algorithm, that's done by people smarter than me. But it actually is cheaper to maintain the new roads that you have rather than put more money into streets that need to be completely redone. It comes down to money. There is not enough money to do all of those streets right now. And so by using this algorithm, by looking at the long-term effect of repaving a street with asphalt versus white concrete, all comes down to what is the most efficient way to do this financially. Now again, with the spending packages that we just approved late last year, some of those projects, like Hester Road is one that I get probably more than anything, you'll start to see some of those projects hit a construction phase. A lot of those right now are in design phase. When you approve money or spending to improve that infrastructure, it doesn't immediately go into a construction phase. There are designs that need to be done, engineers get together and figure out the most efficient way to do this, and then you move to a construction phase. So like I said, with this earmarked package that we just approved, we'll hopefully start to see some of those projects hit construction phase within the next year and ongoing into the, into the years to come.
Okay, thank you. Slade?
My answer is very similar to Dr. Wes, I'm sorry, Woodlake. Very similar to his answer in so much as it's a priority issue. Unfortunately, you know, your Sixth Avenue and your Perkins Road, they have to take priority over other areas, because there's so much traffic that goes through there on a daily basis, not only within Stillwater itself, but, you know, back and forth through Tulsa to the interstate and that kind of thing. It's very important that we focus on those needs first, and although I haven't worked with the city council as far as design and that kind of thing goes, I am very familiar with that from my time in the Air Force, working in engineering, having to go through the process of asking for money, and then the design phase, and then going out and asking for a bid, that kind of thing. It's a very long, drawn-out process, and like he said, it does make more sense in the long run to build a new versus repair sometimes, and unfortunately, it's just a matter of balancing money and needs.
Okay, thank you. And I did want to take this time to comment that, for those of you who are listening, that you can call in your questions, and it's there on the screen, your number, the number is 405-762-6613. So you can call in your questions, and a lead member will answer, and we'll get the question up here. Okay, the next question, and we'll start with Slade. Now this, the person writes, "The Westwood Neighborhood Association was created in response to concerns such as parking on residential streets, among other things. Well, there are other narrow streets in town where people park and fire trucks would have trouble getting through. What do you suggest about this?"
I think the best course of action for those narrow streets where people aren't supposed to park would just be to have signs that say, "No parking," and then make sure to enforce that as much as possible. I understand that unfortunately, in residential areas and areas like that, people do only have a limited opportunity to park their vehicles. We do need to... We do need to focus on the multimodal transportation. If we have the shuttle bus going around town, advertising that to people, you know, as an option for transportation needs would be good, because that way, if a person has a vehicle that they don't necessarily need, they could potentially park it in their driveway, if they have one, or their garage, and just use the bus, and then wouldn't have to worry about parking along the road.
Okay. John?
Yeah, so there's a couple of ways you can attack this problem. One, you can get more vehicles off the street. And going back to the argument about multimodal transport, that is more, that is just as much a cultural problem here as it is a legal problem. So getting vehicles off the street and encouraging people to use different modes of transportation outside of the automobile is one way that you can do that. That's kind of a long-term fix, not something that would happen overnight. Looking more in the short term, one of the ways that you can do that is, as was mentioned, is with an overlay district. So overlay districts are something that you can use that kind of supersedes zoning, that help identify a problem and fix that problem, even perhaps across different zoning designations. So instead of passing, for example, an ordinance that affects the whole or the entirety of Stillwater, you can make an overlay district to say, "This is what we want this area to look like, and this is how we're going to enact this plan," without having to take the broad sort of making ordinances that affect everybody as a whole. So I think that if there are residential neighborhoods out there, for example, that want to change the landscape of their neighborhood, overlays are a very creative way to do that. And you know, like I said, it's something that takes a little bit of citizen engagement, but that's why we sit up here, is to listen to those ideas and come up with an appropriate means to attack that problem based on the wishes of that small area, or maybe not even a small area, maybe a larger overlay district. But I think that looking at the Westwood overlay, that's something that's proven quite successful.
Oh, thank you. All right. John, we'll start with you. What plans would you suggest for the use of the old power plant on Boomer?
So actually, I chair the BLS TIF committee. There are a couple of propositions for use of this property. So this is a property that serves Stillwater for a long time, and some would argue a historical landmark for Stillwater. So I am not a proponent of tearing that down and selling the land. I think that that would be doing Stillwater a disservice. So we've looked at creative ways to, how do we transform this and kind of rejuvenate not only that building, but that area as a whole? One of the propositions would be to turn that into a restaurant, for example, or a place where people can come and enjoy not only Boomer Lake, but have a nice bite to eat, or god forbid even have a drink. That would be a creative use of that property. We have to ensure that we're giving the right economic environment, so to speak, to allow a project like that to go forward, because as it turns out, that's not something that's cheap or easy to do. But as somebody that is actually chairing that TIF committee, I look forward to working with those engaged citizens and involved parties on how to make that work. And I think a restaurant would be a fantastic choice.
Okay, thank you, Slade. How about you?
I too believe that entertainment slash restaurant would be a very good use of that area, because as a relatively new citizen of Stillwater, I do believe we are lacking somewhat on entertainment and our dining options in the area. And I also feel that that whole section of Boomer Road between where the old shopping center is, all the way to the power plant, we could definitely spruce it up somehow. I think that would be good for the city, because that's a lot of potential property that is going to waste right now. And as far as the power plant goes, reutilizing it rather than tearing it down, from an economic sense, I mean, for businesses to come in, that makes a lot more sense to have the shell of the building already there rather than having to start all the way from point one again.
All right. This is one of our listeners called in, question, we do appreciate you listening and calling in. And this listener says, "Do you think we need more painted crosswalks to improve safety such as on Main Street?"
Me first, right?
Yes.
Again, I'm very familiar with having to cross the street here in Stillwater. Even though it is law, people are supposed to stop for pedestrians of the crosswalk. I know on 19th Street, they hardly ever take that into consideration. I think painted crosswalks would be a good idea. However, I also think in certain areas, a flashing light warning people that, you know, people are trying to cross, or even like a crosswalk sign, kind of like at a stoplight where you press the button and it gives you so much time to cross the street. Something like that would be beneficial. I know in Oregon, again, using that as an example, they do have that in Salem where I used to live, a lot of places where like there's a school zone, they'll have the timer where, you know, they're allowed to cross the street and traffic has to stop. And I know the argument might be that, you know, Main Street or 19th Street, you don't really have that option. However, again, in Salem, Oregon, one of the busiest streets that they had in the whole town, they had that where, you know, children could cross the street and traffic would have to stop.
John?
Yeah. So outside of zoning, infrastructure, and specifically transportation infrastructure, is probably where I spend a majority of my time discussing with people on how we can best improve this. I will say that unfortunately, the city does not have unlimited amounts of money in the coffers. And my view on this would be that it's more important, at least right now, to improve some of the existing infrastructure that we have in terms of pavements and getting things to grade and more smooth, as it were, rather than using money for painted sidewalks. Now, if that money's there, fantastic. I'm not opposed to better views of the crosswalks. However, I think it's a more pressing issue, we need to get our streets and sidewalks under better condition, so that people don't fall while we're walking on them, as opposed to trying to cross the street. Because anybody that's walked on our sidewalks downtown right now knows it's a fall hazard. So I would be a proponent of looking at spending the money more in that direction than I would new painted sidewalks, or, excuse me, new painted crosswalks right now. Like I said, if that money comes available, I'm all for it. I think there are a few more pressing issues in terms of our transportation infrastructure right now.
Okay, thank you. John, we'll start with you with this one. Should we, this person writes, "Should we improve the lighting outside City Hall?"
Approve the lighting outside of City Hall?
Improve the lighting outside City Hall. I don't, not specifically, I guess the person feels it's not light enough.
Not light enough, okay. That's not, honestly, something that I've thought about. And by all means, email me, whoever wrote this question, and we can have a coffee over it. Again, you know, the city is involved in multiple different projects right now in terms of transportation infrastructure, economic development. The budget is very tight, and we're going through budget season right now, trying to balance that thing. Staff does a fantastic job every year of balancing that out, and I think that they do a pretty admirable job of that. So it comes down to a question of what is the most efficient way to spend the limited financial resources that we have? I'm not sure that lighting outside of City Hall is the top on my list right now, but I tend to pride myself on listening to all views of any issue and then making a decision after I've heard those. So I'm not sure I've heard all of the arguments for or against on that. Right now, as a knee-jerk reaction, I would say there's probably more pressing issues right now. But again, I'd love to have coffee.
Okay, okay. Slade?
I would say without knowing the entire story about lighting here at City Hall, I mean, I live on the other side of town, and I rarely come over here unless I go to the post office. I'm not familiar with the lighting issue. Again, priorities as they are, I think unless it was a safety-related issue, again, not knowing the entire story, I would have to err on the side of not improving it unless it was safety-related.
Okay, thank you. I'm just looking, we have questions from the call-ins, and this person writes, "How can this," and we're starting with Slade, "How can the city better improve the relationship with the university, the county, and the school system?"
Relationship with the university? That's a good question for me. Well, my wife works as a professor at the university, so a strong connection between the city and the university is extremely important to me, because, you know, if your wife isn't happy, how can the husband be happy, that kind of thing? But I think just continuing our efforts to work with a diverse population is very important, because our student population at OSU, they're from all over the world, and we have various gender identities and, you know, sexual orientations. It's very important that we as a community embrace everyone as much as we can. Public schools, I know pay here for teachers is not the greatest in Oklahoma, but we do have an outstanding education program, because my children go to school here. And I know even though the teachers don't get paid overly well, they do the best that they possibly can with what they have. And I know my daughter, for instance, she has had nothing but the greatest teachers here so far. Just communicating openly across the entire platform, I think, would be the biggest thing.
Okay, John?
Yeah, so I'm a big believer that communication is a means to cure many ills. Keeping lines of communication open between the city, the university, the county, Meridian Technology, the state, or, excuse me, the county health department, all of the taxing entities, we need to communicate. Unfortunately, some of those lines of communication broke down with anybody that was following the Stillwater reinvestment plan for one reason or the other. Those communication lines were strained a little bit. As somebody that is a proponent and a proud supporter of TIF number three, or the Downtown Campus Corridor TIF, I understand the arguments from the county and some of the taxing jurisdictions. However, at the end of this, and I don't want to get off on a TIF discussion here unless it's a specific question, but at the end of this TIF, if everything goes the way that we think that it will in terms of economic development, at the end of that, everybody gets boatloads of money. It is an investment. It is an investment in our city. It is a way that we can spur economic development, have, you know, proper development in a way that does not increase taxes. There is no new tax with this. And we need to keep the end goal in mind. I mean, that's the goal of any investment, is investments rarely mature overnight, and this is a long-term investment in our city. So, you know, to answer that question directly, communication is an exceedingly important thing, and keeping those lines of communication with the taxing entities, we can probably do better.
Thank you. Okay. And John, we'll start with you with this one. And you really alluded to this, but this person says, "What should the city do to make Stillwater better for pedestrians and cyclists?"
Yeah, so to kind of piggyback on some previous comments, multimodal transport is something that we need to keep in mind on every single transportation infrastructure improvement that we make going forward. I think that the current council would all agree that that is an initiative that we feel strongly about, because moving forward, we are going to have more of a transportation problem than we do right now if we don't figure out better ways to get around than an automobile. Again, some of this is cultural. I don't know how to get that point across, that it's okay to ride your bike, it's okay to walk, you don't have to drive from your house, you know, a quarter of a mile to the corner store. It is okay to ride a bike. It's okay to get out there into the sun. It's okay to be a little cold doing it. So trying to foster that culture is something important moving forward, and one of the ways that you can do that is by providing the infrastructure to spur people to do that. And that's something that myself, and I think everybody on the current council, has been working fairly diligently towards. I think that our current better streets projects will speak to that. And so moving forward, multimodal transport is an exceedingly important part of what our city fabric will look like in the next five, 10, 25 years.
Thank you. Slade?
Again, emphasis on sidewalks. I think they're very important. It's very important to have a continual network of sidewalks, don't just have them here, there, you know, wherever they fit best, they kind of need to be all over the place. I was very excited to see the project on Western Road, the 10-foot multi-use sidewalk, for lack of a better term. I've lived in different cities, Cheyenne, Wyoming, for instance, they have a very nice greenway system, I would say four or five miles, nice wide pass where people can walk their dogs, ride their bikes, run around like crazy maniacs, you know, that kind of thing. And I think looking at cities like that for guidance, you know, see how they did it, see what the process was, look at that as an example for us to follow, because I think it would be a very good thing for us here down in Stillwater as well, for pedestrians and cyclists, and just anyone interested in exercising.
Okay. This is a creative question. Slade, I'll start with you. If you received a $1 million grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
I think I'd want to do a couple things. The first thing I'd want to do is, I know, for instance, Singer Ridge Elementary, where my daughter goes to school, a lot of the classrooms, I understand this was the way they built schools back in the 1980s, they're lacking four walls. They have like two walls, three walls, but they don't have an enclosed space. I think in the society that we live in today, that it's very important that we have safe places for our students to go, because unfortunately, there are far too many instances in the nation of school shootings or, you know, things like that. I think that would be a very important first step for that million-dollar grant, ensure the safety of our students. And then after that, I would see the best way that we possibly could use that, either in a recreation sense, or utilize it for the sidewalks that I'm so adamant about.
Okay. John?
I'd put it in a fund and invest it, just let it sit there for a while. If I were forced to spend the money immediately, my knee-jerk reaction would say, "Well, let's spend it on streets," right? That's probably the thing I get emailed most about if it's not zoning. To kind of outline the kinds of money we're talking about to improve infrastructure, that million dollars that I just got as a grant would pave one mile, one road mile of streets in Stillwater. Gets used up pretty fast. So I think a more creative way and a more economically efficient way to spend that money would be, I'd like to see some improved quality of life initiatives here in Stillwater. Block 34, something that we've been talking about since well before I was on council, and continue to have this debate all the time. I would like to take that million dollars and invest it into Block 34. I would like to start building a seed for our downtown to boost foot traffic, to get people downtown, so that we've got the citizenry there to do things like shop, to buy ice cream, to walk up and down Main Street. You've got to have some kind of draw to do that. And so I think a more creative way than paving a mile of street would be to start a quality of life initiative right downtown, and let the free market reign from there. I think that million dollars would go further... I think that million dollars would go further in that respect than it would paving a mile of road.
Okay, thank you. We do have some more questions, but there was one interesting question that somebody called in. If you had 90 seconds more, what would you like to expand on? Because I know some of you have said maybe you would like to have more time. If you had 90 seconds more, what would you like to expand on? And John, we'll start with you.
Anything at all. I would like to kind of clear the air on my position as it relates to the Stillwater reinvestment plan. This was a very contentious thing here in Stillwater, as many of you probably remember. I was a big supporter of TIF number three for multiple reasons. The argument against TIFs in general, I guess, and especially ad valorem TIFs, which TIF number three was, is that it earmarks money away from the taxing jurisdictions over the life of that TIF. I would argue, however, that as somebody that's lived in Stillwater for 33 years of my life, that downtown campus corridor is not something that was being redeveloped a ton. Now, you could make the argument that those high-rise apartments are there, and if we want to see our city full of high-rise apartments, go ahead. That's personally not how I see our city. I don't want our city to be high-rise apartments of seven, 10, 12 stories, and that's the only way that we improve our property values. So TIF number three is something that I was a proud supporter of, and like I said, at the end of this, if you look at this as an investment, this is something that everybody benefits from over the long term. It is an investment, meaning that you have to take some money, put it into this thing, and wait. But at the end of that, just like any investment that's done wisely, at the end of that, you reap the rewards financially from that, and not only directly from the TIF, but the downstream effects of that, of having higher property values, of having more commerce, all of that benefits the city of Stillwater and our citizenry as a whole. I could go on for hours about the TIF, but that's kind of a quick 90-second sum-up of where I stand on that.
Okay, thank you. Slade?
You would think that my answer would be about sidewalks, but I've talked about that a lot so far, I'm sure, more than 90 seconds. I think I'd talk a little bit more about the million-dollar grant question that we had, from a recreation standpoint, like Councilman Woodlake was talking about. You know, I think the high school has a group where they, I don't really know what it's called, where they went and they made that playground accessible for everyone. I think stuff like that is an outstanding idea. I know in west Stillwater, we don't really have an option of a playground. I think something like that would be an outstanding opportunity for an investment like that, because I know there are a few lots of land that are just empty, and a playground would be great, because I know my eight-year-old, she's constantly begging my son to play, and, well, you know, 13-year-old, eight-year-old, they don't really get along very well. But a playground would give her an opportunity, as well as other children in that area, to get out and get that exercise that we've been talking about throughout the night, and to entertain them better, because, again, my eight-year-old, she goes home and she watches YouTube, just like every other kid, I'm sure. But just using that million dollars for, you know, recreation for our youth, or anything like that would be great.
Okay. We have time for just about one more question before we go to closing remarks. So we'll start with you, Slade. What do you think about the State Highway Department's plans to widen Sixth Street?
I think that widening Sixth Street would be a good idea. However, I'm kind of concerned about the land along the road, because there's a lot of businesses right now that, what would happen to those businesses if they decided to expand the road? Because, I mean, the hospitals along there, there's a bunch of medical clinics, and a lot of key facilities that people use every day. I know the hospital might not be much of an issue, because they do have a rather large parking lot, but just the different medical facilities along that road, banks, that kind of thing, that would be my main concern. I know the road can be extremely busy at certain times, especially like when we have a football game, and they decide to block off the road. That would be helpful, to have an extra lane. But I think my main concern would be the businesses, what would they do with those?
John?
Yeah. So this is a good example of why, once we start talking about a project and approve that project, you don't start seeing construction results of that overnight, because this is a big, big project. I will say upfront that the widening of Sixth Street is something that needs to be done. Sixth Street is a main artery through our city, along with Perkins Road, along with Duck Street. And coming up pretty soon, Country Club Road is going to be a more major thoroughfare for people trying to get north and south. For Sixth Street, trying to get east and west, this is the major artery through our city. Rites of way are tough, and expanding it to a five lane is something that takes a little bit of creative construction. I would not be a proponent for moving any businesses out that are already established, but having something like, you know, keeping a middle turn lane for sections of Sixth Street that we don't currently have is something that, as our citizenry increases in number, is something we are going to have to have, until we can convince it more people to ride bikes, or walk, or get out of their cars. Again, that's something that takes time, but for the foreseeable future. The widening of Sixth Street is something that is almost a necessity for our city. And partnering with ODOT, given the fact that it's a state highway, is something that is currently ongoing, and those engineering projects, those engineering designs are something that changes on a weekly basis, because we want to make sure that we're doing this responsibly, and we want to make sure that we're doing it in a way that disrupts as few people as possible.
Okay, thank you. Well, this completes the question-and-answer period of the forum. So now each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks, and the candidate that responded last on opening, and John Wedlake, will respond first.
So, you know, I don't have a lot to say in closing. I would say that if anybody has any questions of where I stand on many things, I hope that my voting record is something that speaks for itself. I like the fact that some of you out there still don't know what my political affiliation is. I like that, because that means I'm not voting along party lines. I'm a Republican, for anybody out there that's wondering. I'm fairly moderate in my views, but I take pride in the fact that there are still those questions out there. I take pride in the fact that people ask me that question, "What are you?" Because that means that I'm not voting in a way that is derived in one way or the other. I like to listen to all sides of an argument before formulating a response. And the fact that my voting record, I hope, shows that, and I think it does, because, again, that question is there, is something that I'm very proud of. And so if given the opportunity, you can expect that to continue. I will continue to listen, as that is the single most important thing I do as a city councillor. As somebody that represents you up on this bench, the most important thing I can do is make sure that I am doing things in a way that you want me to. Again, I'm not a monarch, I am a representative of you. And if given the opportunity to serve for another four years up on this bench, that is exactly what I plan to continue to do. So I appreciate the opportunity for speaking, and I thank you all for being here and your citizen engagement. Here's to another four.
Thank you, John. And Slade?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Stillwater League of Women Voters for this opportunity, and also to Councilman Woodlake for his service to the city and this debate that we've had today regarding issues for Stillwater. Like I said, I'm a relative newcomer to Stillwater, only lived here for 18 months now, but I'm very happy with the town. There are certain things that I'd like to see fixed, so to speak, and given the opportunity, I think I would do a great job listening to the citizens of Stillwater, because I kind of count myself as a common man, because so far, I've just been a citizen of the city, you know, seeing things from the sideline. And I think any level of government, a fresh face is a good thing. I know Councilman Woodlake and the other councillors are doing an outstanding job for the city, but new ideas, new faces are always a good thing.
Okay, well, thank you. This concludes our candidates' forum this evening, and I want to thank the candidates, John Wedlake and Slade Militz, and the city of Stillwater, for their facilities, and all of those who participated in questions this evening. Don't forget to vote on February the 11th, and you can vote early, also Thursday and Friday, for local elections, at the Paine County Administration Building on the quarter of Sixth and Duck. Remember to bring your photo ID, and if you have questions, you can phone the election board at 405-747-8350. Thank you and good night.